Now the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being streamed live via the Township of Addington Highlands YouTube channel. To those present in the gallery today, by attending a public meeting of council, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded. Anyone invited to speak will be recorded, and their voice, image, and comments will form part of the live stream. The Chair and/or Clerk have the discretion and authority at any time to direct the termination or interruption of the live streaming. Such direction will only be given in exceptional circumstances where deemed relevant. Circumstances may include instances where the content of debate is considered misleading, defamatory, or potentially inappropriate to be published. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001, and in accordance with Ontario's Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information provided for or at a public meeting slash consultation or other public process are considered part of the public record. Members of council, staff, delegations, and attendees should be mindful of using names of individuals or entities when discussing matters in public. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions result in inappropriate and/or unacceptable behaviour and/or comments. As per the Township's procedural bylaw, as amended, all votes during electronic meetings will be recorded votes, all councillors present in the council chambers. Thank you. I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. councillor Thompson, councillor Yance, any additional items? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting dated May 20, 2025. Councillor Hook, Deputy Reeve Fritsch, any errors or omissions? If not, ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Business arising from the minutes, Lake Partner Program.
Thank you. So as part of the minutes on, from the last meeting, council supported a resolution from the Federation, or a request, sorry, from the Federation of Ontario Cotagers with respect to the Lake Partner Program. And part of that saw us submit a letter to the Premier and the Minister of the Environment Conservation and Parks in support of that program. We also copied it to Rick Brzezis' office as our local Member of Provincial Parliament. I just wanted council to know that I did receive a response from Rick Brzezis' office alerting us that the Ontario Government already publicly stated several times that the Lake Partner Program isn't going anywhere, and funding for that program was included in the 2025-2026 budget that was released last week. So I just wanted to provide council with an update that that program is, is going to still remain funded by the Ontario Government. That's all.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to receive that report. Councillor Thompson, Deputy Reeve Fritsch, ready for the vote. Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Boat washing station. Patricia?
Thank you. I also just wanted to provide council a report from previous council meeting where we talked about the boat washing station and the locations for the dates that we were provided. We did a little bit of a change up there, so for June 4th to the 11th, it will be in Bonaco Provincial Park. They were more than happy to support the idea and provide a location, and they also have some staff available if anyone needs assistance, so they, they said they didn't need to worry about volunteers. For July 2nd to the 9th, it will be at Scudimatta Lake at the boat launch at Jock's Bay Road. Volunteers from the SDRA are available to provide support, and we're very eager to support that date as well for the, for Scudimatta. And August the 6th to the 13th, it will be Buckshot Lake at the North Shore Road Boat And we have support from North Frontenac on that as well, and Mississippi Valley Conservation Authority is aware of both locations as well, and dates. Thank you.
Ken?
I think that's very good news and shows that the township is supporting their efforts on controlling Eurasian milfoil as much as we can at a very reasonable cost, so it's nice to get the volunteers involved, and thank Patricia for working on this, getting it working so it happens.
I guess we need a motion to receive that report. Councillor Yance, seconded by councillor Hook. Any further questions or comments? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, Patricia. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof? Rising report, I guess I've got one here somewhere. A closed meeting was held at 12:00 PM today pursuant to section 239 sub 2 of the Municipal Act as amended, as which recommendations, recommendations were made to adopt closed meeting minutes of May 20, 2025, to receive information of a commercial and financial nature supplied in confidence to the municipality, which if disclosed would, could be reasonably be expected to interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group, the person's organization, and to receive resumes for the part-time office assistant temporary position and to instruction, and to instruct staff to re-advertise. And the motion that the recommendations be adopted. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, seconded by councillor Yance. Any questions? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Delegation, matters for consideration, draft final newsletter. Any questions? Tony?
Thanks, Henry. Comment, I thought it looked, looked a very good newsletter, and there's just one minor grammatical change under Roads and Waste Manager's title. It's just a spelling error. Would have brought it up for previously, but I forgot. I thought the letter was good, newsletter.
You just had a question under building and bylaw, but I, and it's about windows?
I'm sorry, I just had a question, building, under building and bylaw, under the windows statement there, perhaps I could just talk to the building inspector? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, she'll do that.
I guess we need a motion to approve. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, seconded by councillor Hook. Yeah.
Sorry.
Somebody have a question? Hands going everywhere.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the mover and seconder, and then we can, so was it, thank you.
Deputy Reeve, councillor Hook.
And Hook? Awesome, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Sorry, I was just going to mention to council that I had a recommendation to add two more points, one about our civic portal and one about accessibility, and that would be that we have alternative formats available, so we would put that statement on there as well.
Ken?
I have a question. This looks really good, looks like a website to me, but it's a lot of information, I just wondered what's, is there one staff member that works on this and designs it?
Yeah, Teagan actually develops the newsletter on our behalf, we contribute, she sends out an email saying I'm looking for contributions, so yeah, Teagan, Teagan does this one, and then Laura Lee does the electronic newsletter that goes out monthly.
Both well done.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Can you get it on the next page? Okay, so, resolutions, yes. Resolution from the Town of La Salle.
Ken? When I read this, the Town of La Salle has brought up a, an issue that is not uncommon with many municipalities across the province, where they're looking for a travel grant when people have to go to the hospital and travel at least 100 kilometres away. Well, from Koin, for the Chio Hospital in Ottawa, it's 200K for any resident to travel there, and even KGH from Koin is 112. So, I mean, if you're issuing travel grants, you could almost do that for, well, dozens and dozens of municipalities through, throughout the Ontario, so I don't think that's ever going to happen, so, and I, I would make a motion that we receive this one.
Seconded by Deputy Reeve Fritsch. Further comments? Helen?
Yes, I, I think we should be in support of this, and the whole province of Ontario should be included in a similar, as what the Northern Health Travel Grant has, so I'm not sure how we can, but anyway, that's just my, my opinion, I think we should be in support of it, but I know.
Tony?
Just a comment, virtually every medical appointment from anyone in our area is, virtually everyone, except the doctor that comes to the family health team, is exceeding that, and most people obviously, you get a minor tax credit if you get over the threshold of medical expenses.
Okay, we got a motion to receive it, so, Ken?
Just a further comment, this letter does not state the distance that the Northern Community have to travel, and I mean, if it was 500 kilometres, I mean, that would make a difference, or 1,000 kilometres, so we don't know, I mean, not all the information's here, so it could be a big difference there.
We know the health system doesn't have any more money. All right, ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Uh, yes.
That motion is carried. Here we get a resolution from the Township of Archapalago concerning Bill 5. Did it come up, has it come up yet?
I'm not sure. I'd like to make a motion to receive.
Motion to receive, secondary, councillor Hook, comments? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay. Matters for information. Councillor Thompson, Deputy Reeve Fritsch, questions or comments? Tony?
Yes, I have a, a comment and then a question, maybe, one is on, a 9.1 on the Ministry of Solicitor General regarding a review of, I'm going to call it the whole billing structure for the OPP, a comment is, I look very, very much forward to figuring out how they're going to take their fixed costs and increasing costs and recover it from municipalities without substantial increases, or without taking out a general revenue of the province, so. The second one is actually a question under 9.4, when you dig into that, the one organization, the Ontario Corps of Volunteers, is this something we posted or advertised before? It's, it's a provincial-wide volunteer base that's being, being established, it was in some documentation once before, but where anyone from any community can go online and volunteer, and then for a bunch of different skills in case there's, there's a disaster. So my, my question is, is can we post that in sort of whatever configuration on the website, just a reminder to people in the public that if you are interested in being involved in, in, in the Ontario Corps, that here's the link to it? Thank you.
Any other questions on the matters for information? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Fireboard on Friday. The course of offices, Roads and Waste, Brett?
Afternoon everybody. Um, I guess I'll start with the roads update, we're continuing to sweep roads throughout the township. Um, it's, we had a issue with our pickup broom, and it's been fixed, and we're continuing on now, so, uh, the site prep work for the playground equipment was completed in time for installation, um, there's maybe some finishing work required, uh, once the installation work is fully complete, so, uh, we're doing some graveling of some roads, um, in Ward 1 and in Ward 2 now, actually. Birm retrieval on Boundary Road was completed, uh, it was, wasn't as, didn't go exactly as planned, but with a couple of days of rough road, but with some rain and some traffic down it, and we're putting some gravel down on it now, um, it should help eliminate some of the washouts we've been having down that road, uh, trying to get that berm off the edge of the road so the water doesn't travel right down it and gets into the ditches, is basically what we're trying to do. Um, the community garden, uh, preparation work is completed now, um, I think it looks pretty good, the guys did a good job on it, um, but, uh, there may be some other stuff that comes up afterwards, I don't, I don't know, hopefully not, but, uh, um, I think it's, it's good for, for the time being anyways, so. The new rotary broom that we purchased for the backhoe is supposed to be in Lindsay this week for installation on the backhoe, that's a rotary, it's a blow-off broom, so that we don't need to rent, um, that in the future, um, it's coming a little bit later than we expected, but, uh, well, once we have it, we'll be able to move along pretty quick with it, so, and finish, uh, the blow-off portions of the roads. Um, I attached the last meetings, or last minutes from our TAC meeting, um, so they're there for your review, um, I guess you would see them in the county council meetings, minutes as well, um, but they're there for your review. And lastly, on the roads, um, one session of the first aid and CPR training was completed in Denby for the staff local to that area, and there's another session happening in Flentin and Hall in June, so, um, I think that's a couple of weeks down the road, so. One other thing that's come up, uh, there is going, or they're planning on having a truck rodeo in Bancroft for municipal drivers to test their skills against other municipal drivers plowing around an obstacle course, um, so we have a couple people that are interested, and I think we're going to send them up to, to compete with the other ones, um, if there's two people, I'd say combined rodeo that we're doing with, uh, that's between Bancroft District and I think it's Halliburton District, um, so there'd be two people from each district that will be able to go on to provincial should they choose to do so, so, um, we'll see if that, they're still working on numbers, they're not sure whether they're going to have enough, but, uh, we'll see how things go with that anyways, and that's, uh, June 18th that that's happening, um, council members or whatever are welcome to attend if they wish, and I have more details, um, that I can forward on. Um, we say usage is starting to climb, we're getting towards summer, right, and I'm sure as this warm weather is moving in now, it's going to climb even more, um, we're doing some cleanup with excavator, um, this week, and, uh, we'll continue to do that as we go, That's, that's about it, other than we did hire, um, our additional student for the summer, and our seasonal waste site custodian, that, uh, is seasonal person started yesterday, actually, in Denby, so, yeah.
Helen, any other question?
I just wondered, Brett, have you heard anything about the Keladare 41, uh, traffic light, any more advancement on that?
The last I had heard is that, um, the, um, their geotechnical work, or their preliminary work is being, went out for tender, and it's supposed to be completed here, um, I think they're talking, and don't hold me to this, because I could be wrong, and it depends on how money flies different ways, right, um, 2028 type of thing, um, for construction type of thing, so, um, we'll see if that comes to pass, but that was the last, um,
Did I send what?
Word that I, I had saw, so.
We don't, okay, in North Frontenac, get those emails and we don't. Anyway, any other questions? Kirby?
Uh, yes, Brett, I, I mentioned that Christine, she could fill you in, it's just about at Heritage Park there, like in the parking lot, there's a bunch of dirt piled up there, I just wondered if that could be removed?
Yeah, I, I don't see why not, so, um, the stuff that was put, put there by the playground, from the playground, I think, so, um, off to the one side, yeah, that shouldn't be a big deal to move it out of there, um, yeah, we're just kind of waiting to see what else needed to be done before we moved it, but we can always hold it back anyways, I realize that the horse bull's this weekend, so, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
I guess I need a motion to receive Brett's report. Tony?
I, I just had a question, Brett, more curious, on the rotary broom for the backhoe, is it a, is it a broom, is it a device that also you can sweep into it and pick it up and dump it, or is it just strictly a broom?
Uh, it's just strictly a blow-off broom, so, yeah, so the, the one that we have currently on our backhoe, you can, it sweeps into it often, you can pick it up and dump it, um, this one's just mainly for the blow-off of roads, so, yeah.
Thanks.
I need a motion to receive Brett's report. Councillor Hook, seconded by councillor Yance, ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a report on the mini excavator.
Yeah, um, so that's me again, too, uh, in the spring 2025, a bud, uh, we had a budget approved to purchase a, a new mini excavator, amount was 200,000. Um, in May, after budget was finalized, we started reaching out to suppliers to inquire about a 8-ton X, um, and look into pricing through the canoe procurement program, um, during the process, myself and a couple operators reviewed different mini excavators and the weight range that we were looking for, um, at dealerships, and then we rated them all, uh, we received some pricing from Linkbelt, Case, Kubota, and Hyundai on the units, and attachments, um, and it was all rated. Some items like bucket quick attach, auxiliary hydraulics to the stick, um, and a steel track with neoprene inserts, um, thumb and hydraulic angle bucket were all mandatory items that we wanted to have. Um, we then looked at, uh, the specifications provided on the specific units, uh, the parts and service information, like the time of business for the supplier, delivery date, and warranty information, and, uh, the ratings were attached. We, uh, we rated the Kubota, um, 8-ton excavator, the highest, and, uh, price was 171, 704, 35 plus tax, so. So our recommendation was that, uh, council would approve the purchase of that piece of equipment from Hardington Equipment, so.
Any questions? If not, I need a motion. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, seconded by councillor Yance, further questions? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Okay, CBO's report. Is there any questions? If not, I need a motion to receive a report, councillor Thompson, seconded by deputy Reeve Fritsch. Further comments? Ready for the vote, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a report on bylaw enforcement. Christine?
So just to recap, what was included in the 2025 operating budget, um, we set aside $25,000, uh, to contract out a portion of our bylaw enforcement, that was something that was in discussion with council for some time, given the workload for the current employee who is doing that, wearing three different hats, and if we could get some support, um, bylaw is one of those things that it's not a one and done, you're moving on to something else, sometimes these calls and these complaints take, um, quite a bit of time. Um, so we reached out to, um, a local municipal law enforcement agency, the neighboring municipality to the east uses them, um, and in discussions with them, there was different ways you could do it, some municipalities contract out their entire, um, bylaw enforcement to that organization, and that's, the, the calls go directly to them, they respond, the municipality is sort of in the periphery, um, or there's sort of a hybrid approach where we're able to, I hate to use the phrase pick and choose, but that's essentially what we're able to do, so we still get the complaints that come in directly to us, um, my preferred approach would be that Dave and I collaborate on those and determine which ones we would pass along to the external agency for enforcement, and which ones we would do in-house, and of course, there are certain ones that, um, our animal control officer, uh, would still continue to enforce, and the additional one being the backyard chicken policy. Um, so the fees associated for the service on a per hour and per kilometre, so that's how it's billed out, we know how much we have in the budget, it's 25,000 for this year, we're halfway through the year now, so it's, it's kind of a really great, I, way to gauge how much this is truly going to cost moving, moving forward. So the next step, if council is of, in approval of, of moving forward with the, um, Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement Incorporated, would be to enact a bylaw that would appoint them as bylaw enforcement officers for the Township of Addington Highlands, that would, we wouldn't be removing the current bylaw enforcement officer, they would just be added on in that, in that capacity. So the recommendation is that the reports regarding contracting out bylaw enforcement be received, and further that a bylaw appointing Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement Incorporated as bylaw enforcement officers for the Township of Addington Highland be brought forward to the next council meeting for adoption. Any questions?
Ken?
So the dogs and the chickens would remain in, kind of in-house with our animal control officer, what kind of, so this wouldn't involve the building bylaws as well, would it?
No.
So what kind of bylaws are we looking at that, that we would send their way?
Sure, so we would be looking at the noise bylaw, the yard bylaw that regulates, um, the condition of someone's yard, disposal of garbage, so any infractions with respect to that, the zoning bylaw as well, so if, if, you know, our current bylaw enforcement officer needed assistance, um, and they've done extensive work with, with enforcing zoning bylaws, um, those are the ones that come to top of mind quickly, but no, the, the dog and the cat, animals running at large, um, and the back- But no, the the dog and the cat, animals running at large, um and the backyard chickens, that would still remain under the purview of the animal control officer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I need a motion. Counselor Hook, Counselor Thompson. Any further comments? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yes.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay. Lennox Secretary.
Thank you. So this is a um report regarding our planning services here at the municipality. We have, um, as described in the report, we've always contracted our planning services and started with IBI Group, which evolved into the current um current contract with Arcadis Provincial Professional Services Group. Um, Arcadis had taken over IBI Group, so it just evolved into that. Uh, the township's official plan and zoning bylaw were prepared by IBI Group um with John Yuliana being the lead planner and Mark Tao working closely with John. They provided service to to the municipality, such as planning reports and and other support that we required in the interpretation of the policies. And after John Yuliana's retirement, Mark Tao became that lead um and continued to be the primary consultant for the municipality. Um, Mark led the official plan review and update that we had done and completed in twenty sixteen. Um, and he's also consulted on behalf of the municipality when the uh county created their official plan and has been reviewing their current um draft as well for their for their update and review. So there's the transition from IBI Group to Arcadis. It was pretty seamless. Mark outlined or continued to to provide planning support to to the township as their senior planner at Arcadis. He approved the reports that were written by the junior planners. Um, however, Mark has now left Arcadis and is with Boulevard Group. Arcadis is continuing to provide that planning support that we have been receiving all along with a junior planner that has been assigned to our applications and Mark Tao is still reviewing those uh reports before they come to the municipality. And he's doing that on a contract basis with Arcadis. So in light of these recent changes, we decided to do a a report to council and um suggest that council may want to considering issuing a RFP for planning services. And RFP was not issued when Arcadis acquired IBI Group, as there was no change in personnel and very little impact to the municipality. And staff will um do some research on that, just uh to prepare an RFP to bring back for council's consideration. So at this time, I would, it is recommended that council consider issuing an RFP for planning services in the near future. And with respect to the official plan and zoning bylaw um review and updates, so far we've had discussion papers presented to council, which were prepared in collaboration with Mark Tao. And staff have reviewed a preliminary draft of the official plan and made comments, which was also prepared in collaboration with Mark Tao. Mark Tao and Mark now has those comments back from staff for review. And he's also, as I mentioned, provided um support to staff with respect to the county official plan update. So at this time, are gearing up to move forward with the official plan review and have discussion with council regarding alternative housing types. Once that's complete, the next step would be to plan for an open house, uh, open house and first draft of the revised official plan. And that is the opinion, it would not be practical to start working with a new planner at this phase. And staff recommend continuing with Mark Tao as the township's retained planner for special projects. Mark, Mark's familiarity with the existing planning documents, including the county official plan, would ensure continuity and timely continuation of the project. So in order to proceed with that recommendation, the township would end the special project, which is the official plan review with Arcadis and then contract Mark Tao of Boulevard Group to finalize that plan and review um update as well as the zoning bylaw update as it is directly tied to the official plan. In order for council to consider this recommendation, staff reviewed the township's procurement policy and are of the opinion that section five point three regarding qualified suppliers supports the recommendation. And the excerpt from the procurement policy was included in the report for section five point three, which which talks about qualified suppliers. And although a retained planning consultant is not listed in the examples of what would be a qualified supplier, the policy was written in two thousand and four prior to us having an official plan and zoning bylaw and having that planning consultant um for the municipality. So it's assumed that planning consultants were not anticipated at the time of the policy being written, but would be equivalent to engineering or legal service, retained engineering or legal services, as they are interpreting and implementing legislation. So it is on that basis that senior management consider planning consultants to be qualified suppliers under the procurement policy in section five point three. So it would be recommended that township contract Mark Tao of Boulevard Group as the retained planner for the finalization of the official plan and zoning bylaw review and update. So there is a recommendation at the bottom of the report that it, the report be received and further that council considering issuing, consider issuing an RFP for planning services in the very near future and that the township contract Mark Tao from Boulevard Group as a retained planner for the finalization of the official plan and zoning bylaw review and update. Thank you.
Questions? Not a need to motion to receive the report. Top the recommendations. Deputy Reece Fitch. Counselor Hook. Comments? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yes.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, no fire chief. Appointees, anything doing? No? Any resolutions? Approval of the accounts, pay last, pay last dated May thirty-first. Counselor Yance, second by Deputy Reece Fitch. Any questions? Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yes.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Any members' statements? New business, Ken.
Uh, I guess I have a issue on a discussion council if I made and I prepared a written statement.
Thought I turned it on. I turned it off. I have an issue that's um kind of bothered me for quite a while in the, in the community and I wanted to discuss it with council and hopefully get your uh ideas or support. So if it, if I may, I'll just read this statement that I prepared. Council and staff support many community improvement projects, which make our communities more attractive and welcoming to visitors. These may include supporting the Earth Day litter pickup, improving community signage, yard standards, and even the new community garden. First impressions for visitors are very important. A positive atmosphere goes a long way in a community. Negativity brings down a community. I've heard that many residents are upset with the negativity of the F Trudeau flags and now the F Carney flags being flown in different places in our community. Some people find these very offensive. It is a form of profanity. Parents, I've heard complaints from parents saying that their children should not be exposed to this publicly. And I think it's also an insult to the office of the Prime Minister of Canada. So I'm hoping council will support writing a letter to our Member of Parliament, Shelby Cramp Nyman, asking her to agree that this kind of displaying of these F flags is not appropriate in our communities. And see if she would support saying that it is not appropriate. And in the same letter, I think we should congratulate MP Shelby Cramp Nyman for her new appointment as Shadow Minister in the Canada-US Trade Relations. That's quite a um achievement for her. As Canada faces economic challenges, there is no place for divisive signage. And it's time to stand united as one Canada, and I would motion that such a letter be written if council supports it.
Tony.
Yeah, I think there's been a little bit of discussion, maybe candid discussion at a council meeting some time ago about the flags. But uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with you completely. I there's, there is no place for them in our community. It's not doing our community any good.
It's not just flags, it's back windows of trucks and
Yeah.
stuff like that. Helen.
Um, yes, I don't like to see those either, and it gets tiresome and then as you get to a point where you don't even see them anymore, right? I pay much, don't pay much attention to them. However, it is a right to have a freedom of speech, a freedom of what uh you feel perhaps. Uh, and using the F word, a lot of people agree that that word is better than saying, taking the Lord's name in vain. So uh, I I see where you, I hear where you're coming from, uh, Counselor Hook. Um, but I'm going to, um, it is a, a thing, a thing to me, a freedom of speech. Um, if you want to, you know, and I, I guess I can't say any more than that. I'm one of those people that believes in freedom of speech, but I don't also believe in offending anybody either. So I'm sort of like sitting here, you know, uh, but it's, it's a difficult thing and I'm not sure uh, how are you going to uh police this? How are you going to, uh, you can, we can pass all sorts of laws and bylaws and so can the federal government, but uh, who's going to do that and look after it? Um, and uh, it could be, uh, they could be saying F one of us, we're all, you know what I'm saying, and we wouldn't like it. But anyway, um, just my comment.
Ken.
And and those are all good comments. And I mean, we've been looking at this for a while, considering the possibility. I mean, we could put in a sign, sign by law, but we know that that's a hornet's nest. We don't need a sign by law and, you know, some communities have you know, permits, you need to have a light, or you have to pay a permit. We don't need that. I mean, that would be an awful thing to bring in. And yes, I I agree with the statement of freedom of speech. Um, so that's why I'm proposing this approach to see what our MP feels about it. And if she said it wasn't really appropriate, there's no need for it, then I would feel comfortable going to those residents and saying, you know, I understand your point, but it's really offensive to people. Why not put up a flag in favor? I love my, you know, my whoever, rather than putting something negative, because um it it does actually have some ramifications. I I know of a property that was trying to be sold. And when the person, potential buyer was looking at the property and they saw a flag being flown like that, that said F Carney next door, it had a bearing on the decision not to buy the property. So there's things that we just don't think about. So that's why I'm thinking that taking a very, not a gentle approach, but a positive approach and say, you know, your, your own member of parliament is saying, you know, please take them down or it's not appropriate. And would you take it down? Because people find it offensive. Not forcing people to do it, just kind of asking to start there. It may not work with everybody, but I think it might with some.
Tony.
Yeah, just, I guess a follow-up comment uh to that is um I don't think the township would be involved in any way in policing this. It doesn't really fit. I don't think within our responsibility, but I think it's a higher level issue, right? Uh, so I agree with the approach. But I'm, in the long term, I don't know how we would uh as a municipality be involved in in that, in the actual request or enforcement or convincing people or trying to to not do it. I don't know. Other than, then a person could just do it on their own, right? Uh, because it offends you, yeah.
Helen.
Um, I guess if the tables were turned and Poliev was the Prime Minister, I wonder if there would be any F, you know, Poliev, and would be, would we be okay with that or not? I think that we have to be really very careful here. I don't like those signs and it gets tiresome seeing them. It doesn't matter who they're F whatever. Uh, but I go back to that. I think they have a right to do that. But could there be a letter written saying, suggesting, come on, you know, let's get over this treat people with respect, I guess, is something.
Ken.
Uh, on a similar note, uh, when we first saw the F Trudeau flags along Highway forty-one, uh, I called MTO in Bancroft. I think Christine had a discussion with them as well. They said they had the authority, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, they had the authority to remove those because it fell under their, their hate definition.
Oh, yeah.
But I said, well, can we take them down with the authority? And they said, oh, no, you can't do that. Only we could take them down. So I sent pictures and locations. Nothing was done. And their excuse was, well, we have so many up in Bancroft that, you know. So anyways, you just want to, where's the stop? I mean, is, is anything okay? Like we've seen um resolutions from different municipalities regarding the swastika. Now, that's not okay. So is this okay? I don't know. That's why I thought this approach to the MP might, there's a slim chance, maybe something would develop out of it, but there's a chance. And we're not being the heavy on this.
I I guess uh, I I won't uh, be dragging this on much longer, but um I, during the election, um I was talking with somebody not in our township, but south of here. And this person had um a Trump sign on their lawn. And uh somebody complained about that. Like, I guess where's it going to end? You should build, you know what I'm saying? I just think that uh, we have to be very careful. Um, just because you might like somebody, and I don't like somebody that uh, you know, you have a right to say, well, we shouldn't be putting uh names up or or belittling them. That's everybody's opinion, I guess. But anyway, I just think that if uh our Member of Parliament can uh suggest uh just for whatever reason, whether it be an economic reason for townships or municipalities, to think twice before uh, you know, their citizens put up these F signs.
Kirby.
Uh, this just to be short, so I'm just saying if you were to send this or ask these people to take those flags down, the name Carney or Trudeau may be changed with yours.
I guess my feeling is, it doesn't matter whose name is on it, like it's the idea of the flag. It could be F Poliev. That's not, that's not accepted either, acceptable to me. Anybody's name on that.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah. I mean, I I don't think I was being political about this. Um, so it's just the whole, the whole signage thing. And and I realize people have stickers all over their trucks and we're not going to do anything with that, but it's the flags on the property is quite annoying. Put up, put up a, I love Poliev sign. That's positive. If you're a yeah, nobody would have a problem with that. It's just the other way, the negativity. Put up a positive sign.
So are you making a motion? Is there a second there? Deputy Reece Fitch. Further discussion. Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson?
Oh, sport that, yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yes.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
And that motion is carried. Any other business? Bylaw to confirm the procedure? Bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Yance. Ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson.
Yes.
Counselor Hook, Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yes.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Motion to adjourn, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Yance, ready for the vote, Counselor Thompson.
Yes.
Counselor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reece Fitch.
Yeah.
Counselor Yance.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you.